Shane Hansen.
Here.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott. Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement, Brad.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December the 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Consent agenda, all of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved by one board vote, unless any board member desires to have separate vote on or any of all of these items. Consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Any additions of items of new business to the agenda?
There are none.
Minutes of the October 4th, 2021 regular meeting, approval of the financial report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, and approval of the child nutrition report, and to declare any items as surplus.
We'll go back to the October 4th, 2021 regular meeting, and I've seen here it's close minutes. Item 3.3, the finance report, you have the first attachment, there are the October 21 investments. The second attachment is the report that I normally provide you all each month. You can see from our report that our gross production continues to exceed our last year's collections. Also motor vehicle tax and RDA taxes are up, and our county full-mill taxes. If you look at the next page on the agenda, you have a comparison. So you can see that we have comparison from year to year in October as compared to last year. Pretty similar expenses. If you look at the next page, there is a chart that provides another illustration of comparison. And you can see that we continue to see some growth financially. Our spending remains about the same. You can see we spent $56,000 less in FY '21. So we spent a little bit more this year, but principals, administrators continue to do a good job looking through the purchase orders. Our activity fund report, no major changes to our activity fund accounts. You look at activity fundraisers, you do have a couple of fundraisers for your review and approval. First fundraiser is for baseball, to sell some uniforms for players, and will surplus those, and then help sell uniforms and that will help for their Arizona trip. You look at the second fundraiser again from baseball, that is to sell 50 tickets at basketball games, home basketball games. And finally, there is a fundraiser request for our outdoor education program, and that is to be able to accept some donations from some folks that finally donate to that program. 3.6, there are no interaccount transfers. 3.7, I provided an attachment that just gives you a comparison of year to year on our child nutrition fund. As you can see, our numbers continue to exceed even last year in our lunch and breakfast. Our keystone food service and our cooks continue to do a great job.
Would you kind of elaborate on this outdoor education?
So our outdoor education program is a program that Coach Foster is passionate about starting. Coach Foster went this summer to a training in Oklahoma City, and it was an archery training, and they provided equipment along with that training. Since that time, there has been some members in our community that have reached out to him that want to help with that program and the implementation of it. And so what the vision there is through his weightlifting and conditioning class, they will also integrate the outdoor education program through that class.
Will there be a specific location?
They'll probably have that in the indoor where they currently have his weights class, as far as I know at this point. Any other questions? Okay, Washington has surplus items. These are all some IT surplus items that give us surplus and hope in the coming months to be able to sell some of those as surplus. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? There are none. I would recommend it's prudent.
Pay a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Those items referenced in 3.2 through 3.8.
Second.
Hansen.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '22. 4.1, general fund as referenced, 4.2, building fund as referenced, and 4.3, child nutrition as referenced.
Again with our general fund, the first attachment. Couple of purchase orders draw your attention to, purchase order number 335, $78,823. That is going to be to refresh some of our Chromebooks and Google license for our middle school students beginning for next year. Purchase order number 341 for $3,000 is Kami software allows editing documents through our Chromebooks. Purchase order number 352 and 353 are repairs to activity buses. Purchase order number 356, $1,736, that is AHS art class supplies. Purchase order number 359 for $4,000 was Pecan Fire, and that was treating our lungs in this past fall. All of the, the second attachment are payroll encumbrances, and those listed are all of substitutes, excuse me, that we've had so far this year. Any questions about the general fund purchase orders? Okay, the building fund purchase orders, just a couple of notes. Purchase order number 34, plumbing repairs with Gagmont Plumbing Group High School. Purchase order number 36, tri-hand roofing. That is a inspection maintenance agreement that will be bringing to board later on in the agenda. Our child nutrition fund, we just have one purchase order out of this, out of this fund this month, and there's 7,000 repairs to our, 700, excuse me, repairs that are up. Are there any questions? Make a motion to approve items.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hansen.
Yes.
Item number five, superintendent's report.
Okay, 5.1, our regulation retirements for assignments. We had them in this month. 5.2, our presentation of the annual dropout remediation reports. So I want to thank Mrs. Smith. She has done an outstanding job with our dropout report and has done so. We had nine high school students that we recorded as dropouts, and she has reconciled all of those, found where they are attending school now, and cleaned that process up. So we have zero to record. Our remediation report, I provided this report last year, and to meet accreditation requirements, it needs to be an agenda communicated through an agenda. And so I bring this back to you again from last spring. We had 48 students, freshman students, that attended a four-year university that were degree-seeking. And so speaking with the Oklahoma State Regents regarding this report, this report does not include students that may have attended a four-year university that did not declare a major. Okay, so we had 48 students in the 1920 school year that declared for a major. We had no students in science that needed any remedial classes. We had four students in English, 13 in math, three in reading. The 2021 information will be released early in the spring, and so we'll bring that information back as soon as that report is finished. Any questions about the dropout remediation reports before I move on to communication? Okay, so I want to update the board. We received approval from the State Department on our construction project to add HBAC in our gymnasium, and so we look to renew contract for next month from TriArc. Also want to recognize our Teacher of the Years and Rising Stars at the high school. Our Teacher of the Year was Dana Manning, and the Rising Star was Bishop Green. At the middle school, the Teacher of the Year was Sue Quipple, and the Rising Star was Kai Cooper. At Lincoln Elementary, Kylie Beely was the Teacher of the Year, and the Rising Star was a really nice one. Longfellow, the Teacher of the Year was Melissa Mahary. And at Washington, the Teacher of the Year is Macy Sutter, and Rising Star was Sage Lewis. Okay, item 5.4, our strategic plan. Want to thank Mrs. Webster and all of our administrators. They've done an excellent job of beginning to review our strategic plan that we met last spring, and get our community to restart. And the principals have done a great job of restarting that as we've gone through the plan. It is, it's big, and so we're trying to pare it down a little bit for implementation this spring. So Mrs. Webster has worked on culture and community, and so I'll turn it over to her, and she can.
I have Megan McMurphy and Carrie Percival for our goal chairs, and we are just, would you like us to come up that way so they can look and see that? Go up that corner table. So we have met and kind of put together some things to look at what we have accomplished and what still needs to accomplish, and kind of looked at, you know, where we've met some of our goals and where we still need to do some work. So these are what have been completed. So developing and administering a communication survey for parents in the community to determine the preferred communication method. You can see the two years there. I don't know if there was anything super important in those, but then the one consistent method of communication. We are still working on a thing with the app, Mr. Warding. Mr. Argo said that there's some complications with that, but we are working on that. And I do know that a Facebook page has been created for the elementaries to kind of merge all of that into one place so that instead of going to different school, space of pages, it's all in one. So we're trying to merge everyone there. Then the surveys, school sites to determine existing committees. And what Mr. Argo showed us in that is that there's a, we really do have a lot of participation. We don't always think of that, but if you were to look at some of those committees, we do have a large group of parents and community members that are already serving on a lot of our committees. Hold this up, you can kind of see with facilities, transportation, communication, gifted, you can see that we do have a pretty broad representation of not only our staff, but community members, parents that are already serving in those, and then we're continuing to add those as we build different committees based upon what we need. Then another thing that I thought was really neat on the community survey, the climate, which has, which was given in 2021. There are several things that we've already met the 80% goal, which is, which was supposed to be by 2024. You can see here, if there's, no, it's okay, there's like the baseline, and then as you can see, the different, what we hope to achieve by '23, '24. And several of them, we are, you know, on track. You can see some of them, you know, were, were not quite where we want to be, but then there are a lot of them where we've already met those goals. One of those being that we, which I think is super important, that we agree that our schools have high expectations for all students. We are above where we need to be right now, and actually, it's 84% when our goal was 80 by 2024. So that's great to see. And then also that our schools are meeting the academic needs of our students, again, above where we need to be. So that's exciting to see that our, our community and our parents feel that, you know, we're meeting those high expectations and meeting those high needs. This last one we were talking about would be added to this last question, added to the survey to come up. And then we also talked about surveying parents during spring student conferences with some different things to try and get as many people to participate in those things. What was, refresh me, what was the one thing we were talking about asking specifically? There was something. We said we should do that in March because we would have the most amount of parents. Oh, after-school programs. Oh, thank you. Yes, that was it. Asking, polling parents, because that is one of our, the things that our community might have wanted to see throughout the strategic plan was the potential of an after-school program, to offer that across the community. So that was something we thought we could poll, especially at the elementary level, since we see the majority of our parents during parent-teacher conferences, that that would be a good place to get that information. Yeah, and then establishing a recognition committee to oversee and execute the parent-student recognition program. And, and we are looking at that. Our, our professional development committee, looking at different ways to honor our teachers, and then coming together and looking at student recognition, since we have, we kind of pull from different places. We have the Kiwanis that recognize, and we have certain things with the, the high school that recognizes. So kind of pulling together and seeing, kind of getting that more in alignment. Any questions about anything that they have, we have completed thus far?
I'm just curious on respondents. How many, I know even you send out a survey, you don't have any control. How many did you get? I mean, if our parents say 50% do the survey, did 20%?
390-ish of the district parents.
What do you think? Is that a bird? I'm just curious. I mean, I don't know. I'm sorry to figure it out. So are you just choosing them randomly? How did you go, how did you survey? How many did you survey?
Back end, so in the spring, correct?
So in the spring, we sent out a alert on our app that had it linked to a survey, and so we distributed it.
It was voluntary then?
It is. It is. Yes. And then I know most of, I mean, I know we sent it out in our, like, teacher remind systems, trying to get as many parents to, and fill that out as possible.
What was the number, Megan, do you know, or how many responded? I'm sorry.
We have that one.
No, I mean, was it 50, just ballpark? Was it majority of grade school? Was it majority of secondary? I'm just curious, because I know it's hard to get engagement with some community folks, and I was just curious what percentages were.
So 2021 was 264. If you look at 7, 29% of those, 30% of those were Washington, 17%. Can you guys see that? It's easy for me to see it. 70% was Longfellow, 21% Lincoln, 34% Middle School, 26% High School.
It's a good breakdown. I just, I didn't want it to be, you know, one area not being represented.
70% Washington? That's 79 people, 29%, almost 30% of Washington. And we talked about doing that also at parent-teacher conferences, maybe in the spring. We talked about May being very busy for a lot of people, a lot of parents, teachers, and that maybe if we could catch them around conference time, you know, and have laptops set up or things like that. I know it's not necessarily the end of the year, but while we kind of still have their attention, because we know we do lose that going into the spring semester just because they get busy.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Very nicely done.
Oh, Kami's going next. So now we're going to talk about moving forward. As we come through this section, it became quite clear that it might be a more feasible option to pare back a little bit on the number of major projects that we include in this section, and make it more feasible for this particular season. With the overall goal and perspective, we've narrowed down our focus to three important topics, which I think Jen is going to share with us. So we really need to look at how we're going to determine to implement the leadership SEL program within our school. So that's going to be one of our focuses, is how will each school implement the program? Because we did a lot of work in looking at what programs we want to use, but it was just too much to say, here, we're going to give this to you teachers to do again. So we want to just stop and look at how will it be implemented at each building, review each site's implementation to check for alignment. So that's kind of going to be what we're going to do moving forward. And then also, because it is such a community, has been big on some of the surveys, is, we would like to establish a committee for to develop, execute, and oversee the after-school program that will be teachers, administrators, parents, and things like that. So that's what we really are going to focus on this school year, with the culture duty that we think we can actually achieve.
And I want to thank these three ladies because, number one, just the viewpoint that they brought to our meeting and shared with us was very impactful, and, and so I appreciate their time and the effort and what they do, because they integrated into this. So thank you.
You're welcome to stay, and you're also welcome to go on if you need to.
I have children that have practices.
Yeah, we understand, but thank you so much for giving us your time.
Thank you.
Item number six, items of current business, 6.1, suggestion and possible board action.
Jane, I'm sorry. I messed up. I made a mistake. Mrs. Brock.
I have eight for Brock.
No, no. I'm sorry.
That's my fault. I messed up. So Mrs. Brock has, has been working towards her library certification, and shared a presentation a couple of weeks ago, and she was doing an outstanding job at my school. And so as she presented, I said, gosh, you really need to, you need to share this with people because this is really good stuff. And so I'm going to turn it over to her, and I apologize, Mrs. Brock.
Oh, no, it's okay. I was just kind of hoping.
I got my zone, and here I go.
I was hoping I'd just be an observer, so. No way.
You're here, you can go this way.
I do want to point out, we do have a new active panel here, Promethean. I'm really excited about it. It's changed our lives already since we got it put together, so thank you for that. As Mr. Argo said, I am working on my certification to become an Oklahoma State certified librarian, and I've been doing that for the last two years through the University of Central Oklahoma. I passed my OSAT this summer. I was very relieved and excited about that. And this spring, I only have one course left, but one of the classes I'm taking this fall is school library advocacy. Yes, that's an actual class that they offer for a full semester. I was really excited and nervous about this class because I feel like advocacy is not always my strongest effort. I can talk to students all day, but adults are terrifying because adults usually have more wisdom and more knowledge, and you, they can always kind of see through this stuff, whereas kids kind of take you a little bit more at face value and think, oh, you're an adult, you're trustworthy. Not always, but typically. So part of my advocacy classes to develop an advocacy plan, since I planted in a library, I used our library as a model, which I do for a large amount of my assignments. So I'm learning to do this job while I'm doing my classes at the same time. It's a fantastic way in order to get some higher education. Part of the requirement was I had to present, like, present this to an administrator and document it, and Mr. Argo was kind enough to give me some time. We got finished, and I was like, phew, I survived that assignment. And then he said, would you do this for the board? And I thought, sure, yes, I would be happy to do that, sir. So this is the advocacy plan I created for a library, and it is actually functioning in real time right now. So let's get started. The Alva High School Library serves ninth through 12th grade students, administration, faculty, and staff. And our mission statement is, the mission of the Alva High School Library is to provide the best educational opportunities for all patrons in a safe and orderly environment by offering the highest quality programs, services, and resources. For advocacy plan, we set an overall reaching goal, and the goal of this advocacy plan is to enhance stakeholder participation within the Alva High School Library by increasing special programming and actively promoting the resources available in and through the library. In order to reach this goal, we set measurable objectives to kind of target each one of our primary stakeholders. So the first stakeholder group that we're trying to meet our goal with is our students, and our measurable objective this year is student participation in special programming will increase 5 to 10% from the previous school year. Our parents' measurable objective for the stakeholder group is going to be the library will offer two to four additional special programs aimed at educating guardians on current or relevant topics. For faculty stakeholders, the library will increase communication opportunities with the faculty by offering a digital newsletter in addition to two lunch and learn professional development sessions. For administration, the library will increase awareness for the library by hosting monthly school board meetings, as well as completing one presentation for the school board. That's this moment right now. And then for the community, the Alva High School Library will increase communications by hosting a monthly community coffee. So with our measurable objectives, the strategies that we're going to use to reach these objectives are based on actual research. And so for reaching our student stakeholders, I'm using the research by Burns 2015, which talks about creating a new definition for the school library and for the librarian. The high school library functions vastly different than a middle school or elementary library. This is not a space where students actually have to come very regularly unless you're checking out a computer or checking it back in, or maybe your teacher has asked you to print something. So getting students to interact with the library is a whole new ballpark and a whole new game. Most of the time when they're done with eighth grade, they're like, I never have to read a book again because AR's finished. And so getting them to participate in library activities and see this in a different way is, is a challenge, but it's a welcomed opportunity as well. So we're trying to incorporate a lot more fun educational programming, like on Friday, I did Eat the Treat for Halloween, so you just came into that trick-or-treat, and I felt they do with candy. And so we have things like National High Bible Librarian Day, Dewey Decimal Day. I did a short story contest during banned book week, and so we're trying to offer some different activities to engage students in different ways. For our parent stakeholders, the research that we're supporting our initiative with, it comes from Miller &amp; Ray in 2018, which really advises library advocacy to be a place where you're offering a hand up to people instead of asking for a handout. And so we're doing that by trying to engage parents in some educational events that are aimed at what they're going through right now. So on October 12th, we were able to do a FAFSA night, and so our high school counselor was here, several community members, people from Northwest Tech were here, from the college, and they were able to offer parents the opportunity to ask questions and fill out FAFSA in real time. It wasn't a huge success, but it's our first time to do it. So I feel like any parents who tried it, I feel So I feel like any parents who tried it, I feel like that was a great opportunity. And so hopefully we'll have something for the spring as well. With our faculty stakeholders, we're increasing communication opportunities by issuing a digital newsletter and by asking, or giving faculty members suggestions on ways to do collaborative instructional practices. I'm a huge collaborator. We have a ton of resources and information available to us. And sometimes as classroom teachers, we don't always know what the library has to offer. So within our newsletter, like I sent out our November newsletter today, and it talks about Veterans Day and how we have all sorts of collaborative resources that we can pull together to create and tailor something to meet their state standards. And I'm using research from 2020 from Strickland, which talks about moving from a traditional collaborative role where we sit down and we plan a unit together into more contemporary collaborative strategies. And then for administration, we're talking about being a visible portion of our community. Again, Miller and Ray has research talking about being prepared is very, very important. So part of being prepared is having an advocacy plan like this, already having a list of resources and things that are needed, and so that as soon as we are in contact with administration that we can say, well, here's what we need, here's what we're doing, and we could be big proponents on the spot for those things. So stuff like hosting the school board meeting, doing regular displays, getting to do a presentation like this is a great way to engage you all. And then talking about our community, it's really important to inform the community but not overwhelm them. Our community has seven libraries available to residents in different ways, from our five school libraries to our public library and our collegiate-level library. We are very blessed with libraries, so we want to inform people but not overwhelm them. Mr. Argo had the wonderful idea of starting a community coffee, which we held last month. Student Council helped host it and provide some programming. And then our next community coffee is coming up next week on November 10th, and FFA is going to be doing a presentation. It's from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, so if you want to stop by and have a cup of coffee and a donut, or if you want to encourage others to attend, please do so. I do have a full list of calendar events, but I won't bore you with all the specifics there. So evaluating this plan is a big portion of it as well. And so we're going to be collecting data throughout this entire year that are really relevant to those measurable objectives. Things like taking attendance at our student event, comparing and contrasting it to last year's event attendance, doing things like surveys, using the Likert Scale, moodle analytics for evaluation, and then some interviews as well in order to make sure that our advocacy plan was reached with maximum efficacy. And so here are some references for the research that I included today, and that is our library advocacy plan for this year. Can I answer any questions for you or clarify anything?
What will you get prepared for next month for us? Because that destroyed.
That's a great question.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just.
I will do, I will do a presentation of student work. We're having our annual coloring contest that starts at the very end of this month. We do it every year. It's a lot of fun. It's like kind of third-grade color contest, but most people enjoy it.
It's good therapy.
It is. It's excellent. Thank you all very much for letting me do this and for being a wonderful listener here. Appreciate it a lot.
Mrs. Brock, one thing I was really amazed at yesterday when judging a pageant is how many kids are reading. And I know that's a select group of people, obviously, but they all were reading some series or something cool or, you know, I wasn't reading much in high school.
It's been really exciting. There, we have readers who actually very much read, and then we have kids who are like, oh, my gosh, I come in here all the time, Mrs. Brock, but I, you have DVDs here. One kid said that they're, I mean, this kid is here probably four times a day just to say hello, just to check out whatever's going on, never looks at a single book. But today they're like, you have DVDs? And I said, yes, I do. I was like, you want to take a look at anything else in the library? And we're like, maybe I should. So we have students who, we have vast ends of the spectrum. I am really excited. Mrs. Gore, Coach Gore, has been asking the students to participate in required reading as part of her class. And it's like, they had to do a fiction book last nine weeks, any fiction book. And so our circulation rates went through the roof when we did that. This week, or this nine weeks, they're working on an autobiography or biography-type book. So that's why you'll see that big display on those green bookcases when you come in so that they're easy for students to check out. And it's getting kids to interact with the collection in a whole new way. And some of them are like, you know, reading's not that bad. And I was like, you know, it's really not. But, so it is exciting to see when kids are actually engaging in reading and reading for enjoyment.
Yeah, reading takes up there, but they want.
Yes, yes. Absolutely. Thank you all very much. Thanks for having me.
No, I'm not the only one that forgets things. Item number six, items of current business, 6.1. Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve a non-recurring professional development COVID-19 stipend for all certified and non-certified full-time employees of the Alba School District who complete, who complete the required training by November the 29th, 2021. The training and COVID-19 stipend is in recognition of the risk to personal health and the exceptional work to prioritize needs of students performed by all current full-time employees during the 2021-22 school year. Due to the continued efforts of staff at all levels, the Alba School District is able to provide a full program of in-person learning to students and families during the COVID-19 pandemic.
I don't think there's a better word that we can use to say exceptional for what our teachers and staff have done in the past two years. They have met every challenge. And I think one of the things that we talk a lot about, maybe we don't realize this, is how many days of in-school we had last year. Really impressive and really thankful for all of our staff and our administrators for the work that they've done. So I would make a recommendation to the board that we offer our staff a $1,200 stipend in recognition of their work in the past two years.
I would make that motion.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Argo, for putting that together and making that application for all of our, our public schools employees. I do remember the amount of dollars it's been given in stipends. It's in the millions, isn't it?
Yes.
To our district, and it's, I'm very, very thankful that we're in a position to do that and be able to tell them how much we appreciate them and all they do. So yes, exceptional is the right word. Thank you. Thank you, and thank all the administrators as well. 6.2, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the following school board meeting dates for calendar year 2022. It starts as referenced here in January all the way through December the 5th of next year.
Thank Ms. Owen for her work coming up with these dates. All of these dates are the first Monday of the month, except for September, January, July, and June. We'll continue to meet here at Alba High School. Are there any questions regarding these dates? Make the motion that we approve 6.2.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.3, it's that time of year again. Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the Board of Education's election resolution to call for a school election to vote for a Board of Education member from office number two.
Well, our primary election on February 8th, '22, then there will be a determination whether a general election will be in the Board of Education, or the Board will approve this agenda item.
So move.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.4, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve closing the following precincts for the 2022 school board election. And they're referenced there, the precincts in Alphata County, and we have one precinct in Woods County due to a very low voter turnout. It's, we've done this for several years now.
Yes, so these precincts, we have voted to close these, I believe, at least over the past three years, but I believe longer than that also. And so I would make the recommendation that we continue to do so. All of these registered voters will receive absentee ballots and be able to vote. There will just be no open voting stations. So I would recommend, I would recommend closing these precincts. Move to approve item 6.4.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item 6.5, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the following staff members to the District Teacher Residency Committee for the 2021-22 school year. Sarah Eckhart, Teresa Rader, Don Self-Hill, Kelly Woods, and Valerie Reyer.
So this committee is, as a result of accreditation standard that we need, but we also use this residency committee to provide us with some ways to improve how we provide orientation for new teachers. And so we're going to really study this and look at this year and see what this will do to find out how we provide this for our new teachers in education. I would recommend the approval of the District Teacher Residency Committee.
So move.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item 6.6, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the following fiscal year 22 service contracts. Can we do one vote for all three?
Yes, you can.
6.6.1, Triban Roofing. 6.6.2, Clearwater Enterprises. And 6.6.3, Keystone Food Services.
So this first contract with Triban Roofing is a maintenance agreement and inspection agreement. Triban has come up and worked on our old gymnasium, and as far as I can remember, one of the best jobs that we've had on completed work. And so this contract would be a good thing for our district to be able to maintenance and repair our roofs and get through those as they are now outside in our classroom. Clearwater Enterprises, this is an addendum to our contract that was approved earlier this fiscal year. What it allows Clearwater to do, it's anticipated that there will be a natural gas shortage again like we saw last year. And so what this addendum provides, some flexibility for Clearwater Enterprises to not be locked in on the first day of the month. So normally, they purchase their natural gas on the index, which is the first day of the month. And what this will allow them to do is we'll still purchase it on that index, but if the price does go lower later in the month, they can purchase it at that price. It appears that January, February, and March is when our premium lines run out. And so this will help the district with this addendum. And then finally, the Keystone Food Service Addendum. We have added an additional, Keystone has added an additional employee, which has raised our price by an additional 12 cents to $2.99. And so from a personnel staffing standpoint, this has been a good addition for our district, and so I would recommend that it's approved. Are there any questions about any of these service contracts?
I'd make the motion, we'd pay 6.6.1, 6.6.2, and 6.6.3 as presented.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number 6.7, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the Goldbach Educational Foundation for the Alba School District to accept qualifying donations pursuant to the Oklahoma Equal Opportunity Education Scholarship Act, 68 Oklahoma State Section 2757.206, which becomes effective November the 1st, 2021.
So this agenda item comes out as a result of a simple tenement, which provides public school and public school foundations the opportunity to apply tax credits. And this will be a good opportunity for our school district and our foundation, and I would recommend the approval of this agenda item.
Make the motion that we approve 6.7.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Part about this, Mr. Argo, that I thought was really interesting was the fact that this has been available to private schools, and they've expanded it now for people to give to public schools, play the same tax credit method I once, you know, opened up some nice, like, water.
Very generous, and I've done it now, so that helped.
Any new business?
No, ma'am.
Signing of documents through by earlier action. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm not getting a motion.
Second.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Part about this, Mr. Argo, that I thought was really interesting was the fact that this has been available to private schools, and they've expanded it now for people to